Good evening, good evening everyone. It's it's good to hear happy chatter all around me. But it is time to get our meeting started. Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowzen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Voice.
Mr. Voice has let us know he would not be able to participate this evening, so that's noted as well. Could you all join me in a moment of silence? All right, the pledge this evening will be led by Ward Two Councilmember Dave Bowzen.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You gotta go with the third one, Steve. You gotta go with the third button like the on the phone.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of number seventeen on the consent agenda as well as approval of the minutes of the July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four special council session as proposed.
Second.
Yeah, just duly note, that's Resolution Seventeen.
Oh, sorry. Yep, Resolution Seventeen.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda has been approved. The first item we have is our public comments. It's your opportunity to be able to ask question on non-agenda related items. So please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your non-agenda related comments.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Mary Potter Grouse Museum Trustee. My office is at fourteen sixteen West Fourth Street. And tonight I want to talk to you a little about some of the Grouse Museum activities that they have for children. They have camps in the summertime, and these are very well attended, very, very enjoyable. So there are two of them that are going to be involved, and this is the last week that some of them will take place. So if you want to do it, you can go on the website and find what they are. They have one that's a local historic event camp, and this is called the Messy Camp. It's one where they want the kids to get as messy and do as many messy things as they can and have a real ball at it. The second one is a camp called New Horizons, and this is one where they use a part of the planetarium. They go in and they dream that they have had a problem with the missiles or whatever they were sending off, and they are figuring out ways to make them work. So these are very instructive, very fun, very nice camps. People are always needed to be volunteers, and sometimes it can be for just one hour a day, two hours a day, every day, whatever. And you will help them do things such as go to the bathroom. If you need to be, you know, taken away from there, you can do that. Help them with their messy. All these things, just accompany them, watch what they're doing. So if anybody has an inclination to be a helper, the Grouse would very much enjoy that. Now, I am really here tonight to give some very special information to you, and I want you to know that you have heard it first. We have a new director at the Grouse, and our new director is Margaret Moy. And Margaret comes originally from Oskaloosa, and she is joining us here. She brings a wealth of knowledge with her, has worked in many different kinds of groups, is very excited about meeting you. So Mar- if you want to change my clock now, I'm gonna let her say a few words, okay?
No, we'll start. She's a different person.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. I just wanted to say thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself to you all tonight. I'm Margaret Moy. I recently moved here from Oskaloosa. I just got married. My husband is from the Reinbeck area originally, went to UNI and then stayed in the area, so he actually works at EPI. And I just want to let you see my face. You'll be seeing me again, I'm sure. I appreciate all the support the city of Waterloo has given to the Grouse. I'm very excited to be part of the staff. I've I met all of them today, and it is an incredible resource, phenomenally knowledgeable expertise that you have in this community, and I'm excited to be part of this community and to get to know all of you. So thank you very much.
A pleasure to meet you, and congratulations on on the new position. So there's, we talk often from working together on projects to participating, funding, updates, yearly updates, and you have some of our council members as liaisons as well. So congratulations on the new position. All right, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elsie Smith, and I was down here a few months ago complaining about the street that I live on, which is four sixteen Oliver Street, and told the city about it, and it had been, you know, in bad shape for quite a while. And the city came out and fixed it, so it looks real nice. So I just publicly want to come down and tell you thanks so much.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't take it as complaint. You were just sharing your thoughts. I think that was Randy. Randy, your area tested out, new equipment, so gave us a good opportunity. So thank you very much for letting me know that. Yep.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, four eleven Almond. I'm down here this evening on case nine nine one four six one two, which was the kidnapping and rape of my daughter and why Waterloo has interest in the case. I first want to introduce you, Mayor, to a book, which is Roberts versus Texaco. And this gave me enough insight on the corruption and how corporations work to be able to be here tonight without having acted out inappropriately. This is a book, The Depth by Randall Robinson, The Depth and What America Ours to Blacks. This one right here kept me a level-minded person so that when I speak on Jewish people, and I have before, when I said the part that David Liederman has played, and when I get into people's interests in that sexual assault, in this book I learned the term Geno, which was given to me through this book by a good Jewish person, and that stands for Jew in name only. So when I refer to him, I do know the difference between good and bad. I don't want people to think antisemitic or anti-cop. There's good police and bad police. Where I'm going to now is persons of interest on the back of the check that I told you that was paid for the funeral, which only a partial payment on my father's life insurance through Jacksonville Life Insurance for salaried employees out of Jacksonville, Illinois. On that check, there was a stamp from Jacksonville State Bank, Northwest, and Mercantile Bank before it got here, and it was only for the amount of the funeral, seventy three hundred dollars. There was another two hundred and forty-three thousand still unaccounted for, and what the perp was talking about, a part of that money when he went in the restroom of my daughter. During this time, Mercantile Bank became my mother's conservator. It was Jim Thielen was one of the conservators, and then Brian Hensy. During the time when I seen that they weren't coming up with the remaining balance of that money, I called Brian Hensy on the phone. Being the son of the conserv- of the person being conserved, I had a right to contact him, and that was in the courts. When I contacted him about the remaining balance, it wasn't fifteen minutes later, and my mother called me back saying, Stacy, you better quit F-bombing with them Jews about that money. And I asked her, I said, what Jews are you talking about? I haven't talked to any Jews. She said the Jews at the bank. So when I told the police who were people of interest, that was two people right here in Waterloo who they never contacted. I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna talk about the window the next time, but I do want most of the people who have to interact with black folks and you're in a position of power, this would be a good read. I've heard about it, I haven't read it. It's post-traumatic slave syndrome, and you need to really check this out to see what you're dealing with, because like I told you before, this is a very gangsterish machine. And machines like this has to be met with machines, otherwise they will just constantly take over. So it's a lot of shit, lot of stuff going on for a good reason.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council or mayor on non-agenda related items? Going a second time. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Thank you to those that came to my last ward meeting. Just a reminder, final Saturday of this month, same place at Ridgeway Sidecar. I will have my normal Ward One meeting. You don't have to come and sit for an hour. You can come ask me a question and leave. It's mostly just an office hour, the chance for you to ask questions about the ward or about the city if you're a citizen of Ward One. So again, it's Ridgeway Sidecar. Come support our local business and get your questions answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to share that we had a wonderful turnout on July thirtieth for the Chamberlain meeting where we discussed the potential plans for for that property there. A lot of questions were asked by the community, had some of their answers, questions, answers. So very appreciative of EPA and the group that's working with EPA. Yes, the consultants. So really grateful for that. Wanted to also mention that National Night Out, of course, is tomorrow, and I'm sure that that's something that Ms. Stephanie would probably share. But I wanted to plug the Roosevelt We Care Neighborhood National Night Out. Will be at Sullivan Park, open to any neighborhood who is not having a neighborhood night out, National Night Out. You can come to Sullivan Park, hear the music from a band called Flava, who's well-known across the city and a very good band, and then have some food and fellowship. So that's taking place tomorrow. And then I promised one of my constituents I would share Ms. Phillips about the, her business being impaired because of the construction taking place on Franklin and her concern about the businesses that have closed. So I share it with her that we'll get with Noel Anderson, sit down and talk about it. But I also mentioned that I will make that aware, make everyone aware of that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, sir. I've, since we didn't have him last week, and we had kind of abbreviated meeting the week before, I just have a number of things. First, I want to ask Mr. Knutson for an update on the bridges. I emailed him that I was gonna be asking that, so hopefully he will.
Can we get an update on the bridges, sir?
And I have another question for him when we're done. See, because in February, you said, you did make the comment July-ish. And I think we passed July-ish, so I was just curious what you could, what you can enlighten us on, because a lot of people have been asking me about the bridges.
Yep, Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. They're just been slow. The contractor's been slow. They are, and we've had probably the last six to eight weeks, we've had issues both, well, at both bridges on utilities and getting supplies in to make all the changes we need to those utilities. They are planning to start tomorrow paving on the south side of the Park Avenue Bridge, half of that. Once they get all that done, they'll be moving to the north half. Eleventh Street, they're working down below in the river on the trails and the retaining walls down there. Once they get that done, they can start coming up out of the river, closing up the flood wall and continuing then with the approach paving and all of that. Right now, the biggest thing is that we are working through with the contractor is that the railings for both bridges are probably not going to be delivered until after the first of the year. So that's just a, it's just a supply issue. So we're working with with the contractor to determine, the DOT, to determine how we can open the bridges safely, because obviously with bridges open and walkways along both of them and no railings, that's a very dangerous situation. So we're working through that. So we're, we're still hoping that we can get both bridges open this fall to vehicular traffic only, and then we'll have to see where we get the actual, when we get the actual railings. So it's, it's just been a slow process.
That's disappointing on the railings because it's been two years.
Yep. The issue with the railings, and I, and people are gonna go, well, why didn't they order them at the beginning? So what has to happen is the bridge deck has to get poured, and once the bridge deck is done and the sidewalk is all done, then they come in and do the survey to be able to make sure that they manufacture the railings to match the curve of the bridge. If they don't, stuff is not gonna match, it's not gonna look right, it's not gonna fit right. So until all that was done, they couldn't even submit the shop drawings and the dimensions and everything to the contractor or the fabricator to be able to make them. So that's, that's what we are being told, that they submitted everything, and they were told by the supplier that there was a very large order that came in just before ours. So that's why we were pushed out until after the first of the year. We could look at moving, we have looked at moving to another supplier, but we've already paid for a portion of the materials. So we're just kind of in a, unfortunately, in a lose-lose situation right now. So again, we're working with the contractor and the DOT to hopefully be able to open these to vehicular traffic, and then we'll see how we can close off the sidewalk portions.
Well, yeah, and so the Eleventh Street Bridge is, was done enough to to order the railings too?
Yes.
The other question that I've had from people, and it's not my ward, but they've contacted me, is, is the amount of overlay that we put on Green Hill by University? Because we basically took the curb out of it.
Yep.
And, and then they, they're complaining about the amount that that we're not getting that stormwater away because of the smaller openings. Is there any way to rectify that? I know we have water sitting right now underneath the, underneath the University Avenue Bridge.
If there's an issue there, we'll take a look at it. They can do some grinding to correct that water, water standing there. But the issue with overlays is you're putting, you're filling up the gutter, and you're filling up the, especially these types of intakes on, on Green Hill. They're an open throat, which means that water comes into the side of the curb versus other ones that come into a grate in the street. We have to close those up to a certain extent. We can't have a huge opening there, because otherwise you have people running their tires in them and cause problems like that. It's just, it's the nature of a beast with an overlay, and Green Hill did not lend itself particularly well to what we would normally do on an overlay, which is, I don't want to get too technical, but it's called a power down. But basically, we thin up the amount of asphalt we put in the gutter section just for the simple fact that all of that is, when you look at Green Hill, it was actually sloped one direction.
Yes.
A lot of streets have a, are sloped both ways, from the center of the street sloped out both ways. If we did lessen the amount in the gutter on the high side, we'd have water standing along all of that. So there are reasons why we do these things. I understand people's concerns, but it's, it comes down to funding to be able to replace all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, sir.
Hammond.
On that.
Hammond?
Yeah.
So right now, Hammond Avenue is, we're getting a pre-construction set up, and we are hoping to start in October to get that going. Keep in mind, the DOT contract was allowing them to not have to start until April of next year. So they're starting six months early, which is a good thing for all of us, and we saved a million and a half dollars on the bid versus our estimate. So they will be starting in October here.
And just, I know you can't predict what will happen there, but that project, how long do they say that would be from start?
I haven't seen a schedule yet. We'll get that at the pre-construction. I can certainly forward that to you when I get that, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
And then I would like to start a conversation or a study of merging code enforcement and animal control. I brought that up when the police department came up with their presentation for animal control, and I was told we couldn't merge those two because they're two separate unions. One's Teamsters, one's AFSMI. But we basically merged them because we're using code enforcement people to cover on-call animal control on nights and weekends. I don't know how we're doing that, but, but we are. So if we can do that, I would really like to see us start a dialogue on merging those two. And we may have to pay a couple animal control officers some more money. But currently, for animal control, we're paying two hundred thousand dollars to have a police sergeant manage it, and we're managing two people right now. And then we're going, going to hire an animal control working foreman at seventy-two thousand dollars to supervise those two people. So what I would like to see is, is that, is merging those two departments under the police department, if possible. And then when we're short an animal control officer, we've got someone that's gonna fill in, and there's no questions about crossing union lines and doing anything like that, or vice versa. Or if you're an animal control officer and you're driving around in between your calls, and you see two feet of grass in somebody's yard, you can pull over and, and, and deal with it. And I think we'd be more efficient. I think we'd get more, more people underneath the, and the, the police department's hospice. I know, I know right now it's underneath our, our city attorney who works with them on a regular basis. But I think by merging them, we get, we're gonna be more efficient. We're gonna be able to cross-train and do, do more duties. And if it costs us a little bit more money, like it's coming out of sanitation, and we must have it because we spent two hundred thousand dollars to move it. So at least I'd like to start that. And the last thing I wanted to talk about, and it's been delayed, and, and I've got the figures from, from Chief Duncan, but, but he's, I'm gonna just ask him to, how many fireworks complaints that we, that we did receive from the time fireworks were legal to, after, after the fourth?
Rob Duncan, Chief of Police, June first to July eighth, I think it was the legal time. We had two hundred and twenty calls, and I know you want to know about citations. We had four citations issued.
Do you, do you recall how many citations we issued last year? I, I think we had, we issued one. But what, what I'd like to, to see, see next year is maybe working with leisure services, because it appears they, everyone picks our city parks to shoot fireworks off in, and we, they spend a ton of money going out on a daily basis cleaning up those parks because it, because, you know, and it's illegal to shoot them off in the city parks. It's illegal to shoot them off in parking lots. It's illegal to shoot them off in the streets. But I would really like to have officers concentrate, if possible, you know, within that, within their shift on, on the city parks so that, that we can eliminate some of that damage that they're causing to our parks.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and the last thing I have, sir, I just want to recognize Mary Potter, who was a recipient of the Eight Over Eighty Award, and it's quite an honor. I was at, at the banquet there, her and Frank Maxman, we're both honored in that Eight, Eight Over Eighty, and congratulations, it was well-deserved.
Is there ice cream tomorrow? All right, all right. You, you work that thing, don't you? Just really quickly, of course, you know, Waterloo is very fortunate to have different festivals and events throughout the year. We just had Irish Fest. I know we had PD, Fire, Leisure, multiple departments within the city, and volunteers helping to make that success. And it's really good to see all those people out there this particular weekend. So very thankful to everyone's effort and to the Irish Fest Committee as well. Also, I want to reiterate, tomorrow is National Night Out. Some of us are going to be on a bus again. I can't, I was told I can't drive.
Right.
But I get us there on time. But our goal is for those that are riding together is to try to get to every one of them that we can. So it's a great opportunity for you to be able to see what your community is doing. But even more importantly, last year during the State of the City, I offered a pledge to the community, and that is to see how you can give back to this community. You know, so often it is, the city's going to do this, or they're going to do that, and, and we do our best. But we need more people that are out there volunteering, whether it's at the Boys and Girls Club, whether it's reading the kids in school, whether it's working with Mary Potter, volunteering, working with young people at the Grouse, but whether it's Habitat for Humanity. But all throughout this community, we need courageous people that want to be engaged. And you don't necessarily have to lead a movement. You can become part of a movement, and it can just be as simple as reading books to schoolchildren. But we need all hands on deck, and so for all those that are watching this council meeting, a great way to find out how you can be involved is to find out where your neighborhood association meeting is at, and then find out from those there what you can do to impact your community, because the goal is to getting back to knowing who our neighbors are. And that's also our strategic goal, celebrating and connecting community as well. So we look forward to the celebration tomorrow. So that is all for public comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as well as Bill's Payment One A One in the amount of eight million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Deputy Clerk, could you read, roll call?
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. On here, we have some Board and Commission members. Kevin Dimler to the Complete Street Advisory Board, that is new. Sharon Droste, Rudy Jones, Bonetta Cope, Richard Day. No, no, Bonetta Cope for our Met Transit Board. Those are renewals, and Richard Day and Stephen Grimm to the Memorial Hall Commission. And both of those are new appointments. We also have Mr., are any, anyone in the audience that I just named? And we also have Ryan Black. Ryan, are you out there? Who is going to be our Equipment Operator One? And I think that's, that's all. So shout out to those that are participating or volunteering for our boards. Could someone take number one?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing in that for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located southeast of two zero three Lafayette Street in the amount of five thousand dollars to Cedar River Renaissance LLC, including a development and minimum assessment agreement.
Second.
That motion has been made. It was second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to Cedar River Renaissance LLC and the Minimum Assessment Agreement? Yes, sir.
If I may, Cody Van Ass. I'm a resident of Cedar Falls, but work here as an architect in Waterloo. My wife and I moved to Waterloo in two thousand and eighteen and were smitten with the historic charm of the downtown area and have driven by homes such as the one on two oh three Lafayette and two oh five Lafayette enough times to inspire me to want to do something. I think all of us have driven by historic properties such as that and thought, somebody should do something about it. Well, I'm not a wealthy individual necessarily, but I do have a particular set of skills as an architect to navigate these waters, and so I thought I'd throw my hat into the ring. I appreciate the city's cooperation thus far, Noel, Adrian, and the Economic Development Team, and just wanted to get up here and show that I'm a real person. I live here in the community. I look forward to doing this project as well as hopefully many more to come in the Waterloo area. So thank you. Happy to take any questions, too.
I don't know if I want to ask many more questions. You said you're a man with a particular set of skills. Who was that? What's that, the movie, the movie Taken?
Taken.
All right. So maybe the council will have some questions. So, um, yeah, maybe the council will have some questions for you after we close out the, uh, public hearing, so thank you for stepping up. Uh, is there anyone else that has comments about, um, Cedar River Renaissance going a second time?
Mayor.
Sir.
I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located southeast of 203 Lafayette Street, uh, in the amount of $5,000 to Cedar River Renaissance LLC, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Council questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I just, I, there's so many things that I have issues with on this, and I, and I appreciate the rehab of 203 Lafayette, got an empty lot in 205, and I understand the policy, we give, we sell the lot for $5,000, you build on it, we give you $5,000 back, you're going to get $5,000 per unit or $20,000 for, for both, both houses. Where I, where I, where I have the issue is the $50,000 development grant, and then tax rebates of 70% for 15 years on residential property. This isn't commercial property, this isn't downtown, you make it, you may, you may stretch that downtown city limits, you know, or limits and say it's, it's downtown, but it's in the corner of 63 and Lafayette Street. And if we, if we offer these kind of incentives, then we need to offer them everywhere. And these are huge, 70, 70% tax abatements for 15 years, it's actually 18 years, because with Clor and Cure, whatever, you're going to have, get free or reduce taxes to begin with, and then you've got the 70% for 15 years on top of it. I, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that, that it's moving forward, I'm glad we're going to rehab that, that house, but putting a duplex on it, on an empty lot at, at an assessed value of $280,000. We're already giving $20,000 in infill development and giving you the lot, and on top of that, we're going to give you another 50,000, and then tax rebates for 15 years at 70%, I can't, I can't support it.
Uh, Mr. Anderson, would you like to speak to that and how you derived?
I'd like to hear it.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, and Councilman Bowzen was, was very accurate that we did look at this, um, primarily as an extension of downtown. Um, this is in the Franklin Gateway neighborhood, I think it was one of our first recognized neighborhoods when we started the program, um, and it's, it's obviously a neighborhood in, in need. I don't think we've seen any new construction of homes in this area outside of the town homes that John Roof built, um, down by Sacred Heart Church, so, um, we're just not seeing any, uh, new construction back in here. We have a number of lots in this area, so we'd like to kind of get a trend going for new construction. Um, looking back at 203, 205 Lafayette, they were both on our, uh, 657A list, um, 203 was not vacant, so we could not go after it. We did acquire 205 Lafayette, uh, tried to work for the rehabilitation of that when it was just too far gone, um, so we did demolition there, um, so we're, we're excited to move ahead and try to make this deal work. The $50,000 is a reimbursement grant for what it cost for him to buy 203 Lafayette, looking at what we would have been buying it for without it being eligible for 657A, um, we were probably in that $50,000 range. You'll notice there is a reversion clause in here that if he does, uh, the rehabilitation, but does not do the new construction, we would actually get that house, so the city is covered from the standpoint of if the new construction does not occur. Um, the 10,000 infill housing is, is our standard project, um, and then they are not eligible for tax rebates and cure, so it would be 15 years, um, they can't get cure, and then the tax rebate, it's an either or. So we did look at this, um, similar to what we do for downtown projects to try to get something going here, because it is a major corridor from Highway 63 to, to get to downtown, and we want to extend that and see that rehabilitation happen.
And, and two blocks to the north, we have all new construction that you can imagine with, with, with Habitat's doing and everything behind all in groceries and everything else. So there is, there is growth down there. But I'm just thinking, I'm just concerned that we're setting a precedence on tax abatements and, and the $50,000 development grant. That's, that's all I have, sir.
Noel, if you may.
Uh, you, you have me.
Could you, could you clarify what you just said, that on the, if they don't do what? You get the house, we get the house back?
It's seven phases, so phase one is the rehabilitation of 203 Lafayette, and then phase two is the new construction of a, uh, building at 205 Lafayette, the plans are in the development agreement. If they don't do the new construction, the reversion of the $50,000 grant would be, we would get the house at 203 Lafayette, so then we would sell that to regain our money.
What about the lot? What would happen with the lot then that wasn't developed?
It would revert back to us as well for another person to develop.
And then the 50,000 would be given back to the city?
We would gain the house versus the cash.
So we're getting a house that nobody wants?
Remember, he can't, he doesn't get the grant until he fixes up the house. So it would be a fully rehabbed house.
I, I kind of, I kind of think this is kind of a, I, I think it's great, but I think, I think everybody, I, I think once you start this, everybody's going to want to do it. I mean, hopefully everybody wants to do it, but I don't think you can do it and do it sustainably. So this is a, a large amount of money, and it's, um, in 15 years, I mean, I have a, I have a 16-year-old daughter, I can't imagine the city not being able to, uh, enforce a tax on a, a property for 15 years, it's not employing anybody, or, you know, it's a, it's a tax incentive for one person, and I, I know the gentleman is, is probably got a, a great plan, and I'd love to see it, but my, I guess I have a question for him, you, you said maybe he'd get back up, uh, would he not go forward with his plan if he wasn't getting the $50,000, or, you know? Understanding what our, what our questions are as a city, was this the, the final straw that made you decide to do it? Or are you, could you clarify that for me?
Yes, so as, I'm sure you are all very, uh, aware of, construction costs are very high, labor costs are very high, so, uh, it, 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 it is one of the reasons, uh, why this project is able to proceed. So, um, all of the incentives were, um, calculated meticulously, uh, there's also historic tax credits through the state and federal program, that's another reason, I mean, that's the bulk of, uh, how the project is being funded. Um, so through a combination of all those things, that's the only reason, uh, the project's able to go forward. I'm also taking, um, because I am the architect and developer, any fees that I generate for myself through the project are being reinvested into the project just to, just to make it work. So basically, I'm, I'm breaking even, uh, with it.
So Noel, um, do we have any other projects like this in the city with similar numbers being presented to a developer?
I have to go back and look at the exact details. We have some projects, and, and obviously Habitat's a little bit different of entity, a lot of times they get things donated to them. We have had Habitat buy houses where we have reimbursed them for the cost of the house, as long as they're going to rehabilitate it, um, in the end. So we have done partnerships similar to this in terms of the reimbursement of the cost upfront. Just a note on the taxes, um, we would be getting $1,500 more than we are getting on the, on the current taxes for the house, um, even with the rebates in place on day one of when they're paying taxes.
Can, can I ask? I'm sorry.
I'm done, thank you.
Anybody else with a quick question before we go to Mr. Bowzen?
When you say $1,500, is that Waterloo's share of $1,500, or is that the county Waterloo the schools, and we get 40-some percent of that?
That would be, uh, after rebates, taxes, so, um, some of that will go to debt service and some of it will go into, uh, to the city. Probably about $500 to debt service and about $985 to, uh, the city.
And, and what the, what they pass with the school systems, none of that goes to the schools of, of that tax money?
Not, no, since we're not doing it as cure.
That's all I have, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Um, the minimum assessed value, is that the combination of both properties, or is that per property?
That is the combination of both. Um, we basically give the plans to the county assessor's office, and they tell us what they're going to, uh, tax on that.
Thank you.
All right. Elevate housing. Or not. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yeah, uh, so on the resolution, uh, we have a, a roll call.
Mr. Bowzen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution approving a, we're on the, the whole thing again.
Yeah, that, that latter, latter part, I think it's about six lines up from that.
Okay. Resolution approving a development minimum assessment agreement with Cedar Valley Renaissance LLC for the rehabilitation of a duplex at 203, 205 Lafayette Street, and construction of a new duplex adjacent to said property with a minimum assessed value of $280,000 with a $10,000 infill grant upon completion of the new duplex, and a $50,000 development grant, and tax rebates of 70% for 15 years, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Bowzen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Um, Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, congratulations, narrowly passed as well, uh, looking to see some great work happening on that site, long, long overdue. All right, uh, let's, uh, resolutions, let's do, uh, one, two, and three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is resolution appointing UNB Bank in A of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number two, a resolution approving, uh, approving and authorizing a form loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of, and securing the payment of 5 million, 5.5 million dollars of sewer revenue capital loan note, series 2024E in the city of Waterloo, state of Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of the note for which, which includes approval of tax incentive certificate and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number three, a resolution approving an audit engagement letter with Bergen KDV for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone with questions on item one, two, and three? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
On number three, is, is, can, is that similar to what we paid last year? I think it was what, 70,000?
Mrs. Um, Swidge, could you please get up and state the answer for the record?
Thank you.
Bridgette Wood, Finance Director, um, the engagement letter follows what their proposal was for their, um, audit that we had gotten last year.
So it's basically about the same?
Yeah, it, it, there wasn't a big increase over last year's numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, one, two, and three? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, four, five, and six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask that we adopt the following resolutions. Resolution four, approving a, resolution approving a professional services agreement with WHA Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa in the amount of $98,220 for the Amesboro Avenue Adaptive Signal Control Technology Project from Downing Avenue South, 2.5, 2.7 miles to Fisher Drive slash Fitzway Drive, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Resolution five, approving a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants Inc. of Des Moines, Iowa in the amount of $116,000 for the Broadway Street Adaptive Signal Control Technology, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And lastly, resolution, resolution six, approving amendment number one to FAA grant agreement N O number three dash 19 dash 0094 dash 055 dash 2023 for the, for a decrease in the amount of $10,557.56, making the maximum federal share of the total actual eligible and allowable project cost $230,515.45, and authorizing the mayor and city attorney to execute said document.
Second.
That motion was made by second. Uh, are there any questions from anyone on four, five, and six? Counsel? Staff comments? All right, um, madam deputy clerk, uh, four, five, and six.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Can we do the next two separately? Can we do seven and eight separately?
All right, number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolution. Number seven, a resolution approving the real estate purchase agreement will get the life ministries for the city's acquisition of property located at 1651 Sycamore Street in the amount of $250,000 plus 1,000 in closing costs, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone with questions on this? Yes, sir. Or comments?
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. When I saw we were going to purchase this, I did like I do with most things, drove by, took a look, tried to evaluate it, see how my tax dollars are being spent. Then I called the courthouse. The courthouse has an assessed value of $86,770. So we are paying three times the assessed value for this piece of property. This piece of property looks like it's a usable piece of property. It looks like it's occupied. When I went by, the lights were on, there was a, a bus in the backyard or a van, a church van, and, uh, I think this is too much to pay. And I also read in the agreement on page 528, that we are going to allow them to salvage everything out of the building that they want. So we're going to end up with a building that is stripped, worth nothing, and then we are going to take more tax dollars and take the asbestos out of it, tear it down, and clear it with no, no question, no nothing about what we're going to do with it. It's just another piece of ground. We have ground all over, we have acres and acres of ground. We got Sunnyside Salto, residential out there that we could be selling. We've got lots, last I heard, 250, 657A lots. We've got the Rath site, we've got sites all over. Why do we want to spend 250 to buy it, another X amount, maybe 100,000, clear it, take the asbestos out it and do whatever? A building that is functional and being used. I think there's something wrong here, and I don't know why we're doing this, uh, unless somebody's got a secret, which they may have, I don't know. You know, maybe there's some great use for it, maybe there's somebody going to come and bail us out. This is not the proper use of the taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
David Dry, 3145 West Forest Street. Um, I also have a disagreement with the purchase of this property at that kind of money. I, I would like to know what the intent of purchasing it is. Uh, is it a, a building we're going to resell and get our money back out of, or is it, uh, are we going to take the hit on it because the property is in a neighborhood, apparently, that doesn't have that kind of value? We're going to pay that kind of value, and now all of a sudden, the taxpayers take the hit on it. That's unsustainable. Uh, I, I also looked this up and found out the same thing that Forrest did. And please give me a reason why we need to have this piece of property. And are, are they intending to go somewhere else and, and have a piece of property that, that, uh, they will purchase from the city? Or will we also give that to, and, and I, I have nothing against churches, I'm a good Or will we also give that to, and, and I have nothing against churches, I'm a good Christian man. But this is unsustainable for the taxpayer. And it, it's just unsustainable. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, is there anyone else who'd like to comment about this item on the agenda? Alright, let's go to, miss, you got questions before I go to Noel?
Yeah, I've, I've.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll say right off the bat, I was a hard no coming into this meeting tonight. They spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a building valued at eighty-six thousand. I'm disappointed that I got this at, at the council meeting. And, and this is all the information that, that, well Noel actually sent, emailed this to me just before the work session started. So now, now that I have some quantifiable information about this, it, it tends to change my opinion on this. I thi, I think it's too much, but we're also going to get four point five lots out of it. Right now, it's a church. It pays zero taxes. We're not getting a dime out of it right now. If it stayed a church forever, it just, it would be not on our tax rolls. I don't think we can demolish it for sixty to eighty thousand that, that's in this information, because I don't think we've done an asbestos assessment. And when that, I believe it used to be the Rath Union Hall at one time, the Rath Packing Union Hall. And I will guarantee you, the years it was built, there's asbestos in there. So I, I don't, I don't think we can demolish it for this cost. But I, I do believe that, that, as I said before, I wasn't going to support it based on the information I got just before the meeting. I can, I can see the benefits of supporting it, and I can see the benefits of gaining four and a half lots and the possibility of taking some six fifty-seven A lots next to it, and actually putting something on the tax rolls. So although I wasn't going to support it walking in here today at four fifteen, I, I plan on supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, any comments?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I mean, there is some good news. Remember, we did get an EPA grant for a million dollars. So we can, we will be eligible to use that for the removal of the asbestos from here.
In October.
Um, in October, October one. So we're working on getting that all set up now. We did demolish eleven hundred Sycamore, which is slightly bigger than this building for about seventy thousand. So again, with the asbestos being taken care of by the grant, we think we can keep it in that sixty to eighty range for, for the demolition. But yeah, exactly right. I provided the, the council with information. We've seen great success in the area from Sixth to Eighteenth on both sides of the river with infill commercial, small commercial buildings. The nice thing about that is this is kind of an infill industrial park where you're close to the highway for small businesses, so it's really good for small business development. Also putting a lot of jobs back into the Rath Packing Plant area, and then in close proximity to downtown. So hopefully, some of those, those workers will go down there and, and eat at the restaurants and all that in the downtown area. So we've seen some buildings built on infill lots, really ranging from about two hundred and three thousand up to three hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven eighty. So again, seeing some, some good tax base created with some of these infill lots. So we're excited about the, the four point five lots.
Do they still have the Betty program?
We could definitely work with HUD to set up a Betty program. It's, it's a, it's a longer process to, to, to get that all set up, but it's something we have utilized in the past for the Lafayette Park development and some riverfront, river trails. So we could definitely do something like that.
Can you explain what that is?
It's a Brownfield Economic Development Initiative. So it's HUD funds, and you're essentially creating a loan program based on our future CDBG money coming in to loan money in, in advance that we can create for, last time we did a, a Brownfields Cleanup Revolving Loan Fund, to where we loaned, the city loaned itself money and paid it back with the funding to get some development done.
And it's how, how some of our trails in that area was done, but it was also how we were able to do Lafayette Park as well from the dol, the pennies on the dollar, how that we got from those projects in that area. But it's, it's a program that fits that entire area, so we'll have to take a look. But any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I, I must admit, I was leaning towards knowing this as well, but, and I'm not obviously as fast a reader as Mr. Bozen is, because this is just handed to us. Could you, can you give the people that expressed interest a little more clarification on where our potential is in that ne, in that neighborhood, in that area? Some blue sky for us.
I mean, essentially looking at, you know, really going from Sixth to Eighteenth Street, both sides of the river. You know, we, we've, we've gone in and taken out some dilapidated houses through the six fifty-seven A program, and, you know, given the proximity to Highway two eighteen. And then, of course, Eleventh Street and Eighteenth Street were both, the bridges, Eleventh is being rebuilt, Eighteenth Street was rebuilt, both utilizing some rise funding from the state. So they were built to hold heavy trucks and all that, to create jobs in the area. The last grant we had from, for the Eleventh Street one was about one point eight million. So again, by doing these types of activities, we're also making ourselves eligible for more grant funding from the state and the feds. I think you can see on the chart here, I mean, going back to two thousand and seven, when we kind of started to utilize the six fifty-seven A program in this area, we've had about four point five, seven million in new investment in a lot of, and, and again, it's all smaller buildings, either on single lots, or it's bigger buildings on double lots if we got two in a row. But they're really good for small business development. You know, and it's shown on here, Crystal has continued to be our, our hero in the, in the Rath area on the, on the, on the north side of the river, and really creating, you know, about twenty million in new investment in there. So again, try to play off that and create a, like I said, a pocket industrial park in this area to, to help revitalize it.
So it's zoned, what's it zoned as?
It's all zoned heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial?
Heavy and light industrial.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
The, adding on to what Mr. Bozen said, putting this on the tax roll is imperative, but what I really appreciate about this is, is it showing that we are, we have a city plan, and we are putting things where they belong. So putting industrial with industrial, putting residential with residential. We have a lot of work to do on the north side with getting these properties so they are beside what they should be beside. That way, we can increase values on the north side. So I'm, I'm very excited about this. If you could send this to us sooner, that'd be appreciated.
Yes, yes, sorry. And I, and I believe there's an old Rath neighborhood plan that we had done back in the late nineties, and we'll probably look at revamping that in, in the near future here. But you're exactly right. It kind of showed where we put riverfront housing, where we'd have kind of the employment center and try to put businesses back in here, and that's the plan we're working to follow.
Thank you.
It's just a, a tough challenge. It's an older part of the city, but it's one where we had major industry in Rath right next to, right next to houses like we see in a lot of different places around our community as well. So that old concept of walk to work. So anyway, sir, yes, sir.
One last question, please. And this may, may, may not be able to be answered, but I was hoping, this is an existing church, is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Is there, is there plans, I'm hoping, for the church to relocate? Do we have anybody that knows if this money is going to allow them to? And it may be in here, I'm sorry. Oh, very good. Okay. See, I might have just gotten the answer. But please.
Pastor Brian Hill, Gift of Life Church. Yes, we plan on relocating because that particular area is, is industrial, and we are at the point, there's nothing else we can do with that property.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So yes, we are relocating.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. They passed. Number eight, eight, please. You want it by yourself?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Mayor.
I can take it.
Oh, you can take it. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Alright. Adopt a resolution approving a development agreement, minimum assessment agreement with FDP OC LLC for the rehabilitation of five oh three Commercial Street for multi-story mixed-use building, approximately seventy-eight apartment units on the upper level and retail storefront on the ground level, including infill housing assessed. Incentive of five thousand per residential unit property tax rebate for years one through five at ninety-five percent, years six through ten at nine, ninety percent, years eleven through fifteen at eighty-five percent. Payment of fifty percent of removal of exterior paneling at twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and a minimum assessment agreement of seven point five million dollars, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to. I think you're here for item number seven. But you're more than welcome to stay.
It's going to get quiet here.
We did, there is, there is, there is popcorn.
We have popcorn?
No.
Why didn't you offer us popcorn?
Because you're here every time, every night.
That's why we should get popcorn.
Yeah, with a little sugar on top. You know how to clear a room.
Alright, so number eight. Is there anyone in the audience with questions on number eight, before we go to Mr. Bozen?
How'd you know I was going to say something?
You wanted it pulled.
Yeah, you're right, exactly right, I did. Once again, similar to the two oh three, two oh five Lafayette, I have a number of questions about the, the amount of incentives. Because I know they're get, they're, they're getting their historical tax credits or their workforce, whatever they're getting. But we're going to be three hundred and eighty thousand dollars into it for the five thousand dollars a door, or basically an, an apartment. When, when this was on the agenda two weeks ago and pulled, it was a maximum of fifty thousand dollars for the removal of, of the aluminum panels. And we were going to pay half, and now it's twenty-eight thou, our half is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I don't know why we're paying to help remove the aluminum panels that, that you can sell for scrap to begin with. What this doesn't say is that we're vac, also vacating Cedar Street during the construction, and then to them after it's done, allowing for an, an access into the River Plaza parking lot. And then we're going to give them an acre of land, either at the Northeast Industrial Park or at the Midport Development Park. And when they take the warehouse down on the north end of that building and move that warehouse out there, we're going to give them an additional two hundred thousand dollars to move the building. And the standard development agreement outside of downtown, outside of the five thousand dollars a unit, I believe, is seventy-five percent for fifteen years. So we're exceeding that again, where we're going to ninety-five, ninety, and eighty-five. I've had people that have been doing development downtown that says, if we're giving this, they're asking for it the next time they come before, before with the del, development. So once we start this, it's going to create a, a domino effect that, and, and I'm just, I'll just throw out an example, if JSA's got a, a big project or any kind of project, they're going to ask for this. I'll guarantee you they are. And anybody else has that's got a project downtown. I think that we should stick with our standard development agreement of tax abatements. We're get, already given the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The development agreement does not, I don't, I went through it more than once, but I didn't see where it, it called, and we talked about it earlier around our parking. That we're not requiring them to create parking. And, and I, and when you talk about seventy-eight units, you got, you're going to have seventy-eight vehicles, if not more. That we're going to flood the downtown area and parking, parking areas. And, and I think our development agreement somewhere, somehow has, should, should be addressing that. If we got a parking ramp right across the street, that should be part of the development agreement that they, that, that part of their parking, that they have to create their own parking. And if, if there's not land available to create their parking, or X amount of land they'll have on the north side of that building, well then, they should, they should, part of that development agreement should be that, the, to use our parking ramp that's right across the street. I, I just, I, I think we're opening up a, a bag of, a, a bag of something here that, that's, that other people are going to come ask for, just like I mentioned on the two oh three and two oh five Lafayette. If we, if we offer, if we open that up, then we open it up anywhere that we consider downtown for those type of tax rebates. That's all I have, sir.
Alright, thank you, Doug.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Would the developers still be interested in this if we revised it to be more like our development agreements now?
Probably not.
Not even a little bit?
Well, so, will, will, is there, will there still be the same interest?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So let me try to address some of that before giving the, the answer there at the end. They are looking to redevelop the historic Courier site. They will have forty-four underground parking stalls and seventy onsite parking spaces, so they should have an abundance of parking based on their design of the, the units being provided. But the parking ramp, of course, is across the street as well if they need to use that. The one, the, the two hundred thousand dollars for the metal building, so going back in, in little ways in history, Randy and myself looked at the building. They were planning on just demolishing it, taking it off-site. The building's in pretty good shape. So we actually put that in the agreement at the city's behest to try and get them to save the building. It's in pretty good shape. We actually had bids to take it apart and move it to a different site for about two hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, they would still have to put in some foundation work. They'd have to do some landscaping. They'd have to do some parking as well as that. But that was just the basis of the metal being moved instead of just being thrown away. So trying to look at recycling the building, but also for the city to get a new industrial building, either in one of our industrial parks where we already own the land. So we would just deed them an acre for the new building. So that was really the city trying to kind of win-win with a new industrial building as well as for the project. Remember, this project is raising the value of the site by six point five million dollars. So it'd be great if we had a lot of other projects that are going to raise the value by six point five million dollars. This is by far, with our recent agreements, and we do a comparable, comparison Excel spreadsheet I can get to as well as to what the grant is, what the rebates are, and what the increase in, in taxable value is. Again, this one's off the charts. Our other, our other projects are below a million dollars in taxable value increase. For the other projects we've done, they're closer to four hundred thousand. With this one being at six point five, it's definitely off the charts. The Art Block Building, the Sixcom Building, we actually had tax rebates at twenty years set up for those, so they were looking at that. We wanted to push it back to the fifteen years instead of twenty years. So that was where we came up with the, the, the smaller schedule at fifteen years. It seems like a lot at ninety-five percent, and it is. They'll still be paying taxes paid net of the rebates at eighty thousand. That's about thirty-five thousand to the debt service, which helps us keep the levy down. And that's about forty-four thousand then to the city of Waterloo, into the TIP district for more projects. So the, the size of this project, remember, you're also bringing seventy-eight new residential units downtown. Hopefully, those are people that are eating downtown, shopping downtown. They are paying some kind of parking fee if they're using the ramp, but hopefully, they're shopping and eating downtown. So we think there's a lot of benefits to this project. It's a huge project. It's about an eighteen million dollar investment on their side to raise it to that seven point five million dollars in new taxable value. So this is a larger project, so there's a little bit of an increase in some of the incentives.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Charles.
Thank you. When I was on the Board of Adjustments, something we talked about frequently was uniqueness. And before we made a decision, our objective was to make sure that the project had a uniqueness, or the, the variance had a uniqueness, so that way it could not be reapplied. So if someone wanted to add a room to their house, but they did not meet the round, appropriate amount of square footage for their land, they would have to come to the Board of Adjustments, which is the only board that we don't deal with, is council. And we would have to make a decision, are they allowed to break council's ordinance in order to put that room on there? And we have to say, okay, this is why. So that way, every Tom, Dick, and Harry didn't come in and say, well, I want a bigger house too, and I don't have enough space. But they gave them a variance, and now they have to give me a variance. What I would like to hear is what you think the uniqueness of this project is, just clearly, so this would not be replicated.
And, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I forgot to talk about the panels. So they are going for historic tax credits. There were some people at the historic offices that thought the metal was historic, which really kind of wrecked the ability for upper-floor residential. They, that you, you have to have windows. You can't have units up there by building code that don't have windows. And so all the windows would have been on an interior courtyard. They did take, you know, some risk in taking the panels off to try and meet that. That was after a couple of, we had two meetings with the WDC, kind of, kind of design-build management team to talk about the want and the desire by the city for upper-floor residential, especially in this area. You're highly visible from the convention center. So they took the risk of, of taking the metal panels off, and they are applying for the historic tax credits with the new design you can see that was there. And I don't know if you're all aware, the, the original building was two stories. They built the third story on when they put the metal panels on. So as you drive by it, the entire third floor is just concrete block. The other portion, you can see what it looked like. They just filled in the windows with concrete blocks. So we did encourage them to remove the metal panels to get the design and the residential that we want downtown for density. So that's what we're offering to, to, to pay for half of that. It changed from the fifty thousand to the twenty-eight, three seventy-five just because we know exactly what the cost was, so we wanted to make this as accurate as possible. But it's obviously unique from that standpoint of, it's a historic building downtown. It's right across the street from the convention center. I was trying to read my own writing here. And then, you know, just kind of going back to the incentives, you know, the, the Moody's Firm, who we go and get our ratings from for our bonds and all that, have said before that the city, they like the incentive programs by the city of Waterloo, not necessarily for the numbers, but for the setup of them. It's all through rebates. It's all through things being done, and then funds being paid with the infill program. So again, we know all the project is happening before any payments are made. So with the infill funds at the end of getting the certificate of occupancy or the rebates being paid as they pay their taxes, it's a very safe form for the incentives and to make sure the project happens.
Mr. Simon.
Is there any requirements on the size of the square foot of these units? And isn't there a qualifying number of low-income housing that has to go in that property to qualify for any?
They have workforce housing tax credits currently for the site, I believe, for sixty-nine units. So I think they might be applying for the additional to get up to that seventy-eight. There is no low to moderate income requirement to that. That doesn't mean they couldn't do it. If they went for some more tax credits, the historic tax credits also do not require any low to moderate income units.
And then?
And then in terms of the size of the unit, no. I mean, there's, there's going to be size requirements for the building code, but otherwise, they're probably looking at some of the other downtown ones. We do have a twenty-twenty housing study of downtown Waterloo and Cedar Falls that was done by a private party and shared with us that kind of shows the differences in rent prices and all that from twenty-twenty. So those are changing a little bit. But I imagine they're going to look at which ones they think are going to be the most marketable and, and fill the fastest.
And do we have any kind of design, architectural look at what's going in there, what it's going to look like? Any of the landscaping or any of the, do we have anything like that to, to, to hit on his part about the uniqueness?
They're obviously going for historic tax credits, so we'll, we'll find out as they go through that process exactly what it looked like from a historic standpoint. And we'll definitely get that back to the council when we see them.
No, what about the WDC, though?
WDC has a design-build management team, so they will do some redesign review. I think that's in, I forget which section it's in. There's a part in there that says it will go through their design team to look at and make recommendation to council.
What's the other, what's the other acronym?
Oh, and I'm sorry, there's also a Main Street Design Review Board. There's a lot of them here. There's a lot of them here that'll also review it.
And so, you know, facade, conversation, I won't say oversight, but somebody watching at WDC just met with the group, what, this month, last month?
Last month.
To talk about their design plan, so.
And then, just to finish up, I still think there's a precedent being set here that where does it stop? I mean, we had, we have one in place now that's pretty common, seventy-five percent for fifteen years. I don't know if that's the norm across the state or if it's for a city our size, or are we unique in that regard? And then, also, if we're gonna continue to modify that and change it, it's, where does it stop? Like I said, I kind of wanted to hear the uniqueness of it. Does the uniqueness give us an opportunity to stop it at some point? Because then, if somebody comes up tomorrow and wants to have a development, and they want the same deal, ninety-five or eighty-five percent, is this like, well, you gotta, you gotta meet this uniqueness requirement or some kind of requirement? And I don't think we have that.
I would, I mean, I would say that is kind of the standard deal, the fifteen years at seventy percent for projects in that value of what they're going up by the minimum assessed value. For projects going up over six million dollars, we can go with this new standard if we can get some more of those.
So, in your opinion, you think that this is a big fish we want?
I definitely think this is a big fish we want for historic reasons, for the location and for the seventy-eight units. You know, we have, and kind of part of the other question, we have looked at what other cities have done in downtown development. There's a lot of cities, Des Moines being one, that offers a lot of grants upfront for projects to happen, whereas we're doing the rebates and the infill grants at the end. So, again, we're a little more assured that the project happens.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to thank you, Mr. Simon, for bringing it up. One of the contingencies that I would like added to that is that there are some accessible apartments, I mean, some financially accessible apartments where you have some mixed income people in those apartments, so that we are providing those opportunities for individuals who have a lower income.
And then, there's nothing specific in there requiring it, but obviously, they can, they can do it. And we can share that with them about, I think we actually did at the WDC meeting to talk about that. The percentages of the Grand Crossing project, I think it was like eighteen percent to eighty-two percent or something where there were some units provided in that one. That was required because of the source of funding from the state CBG.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
But Grand Crossings is almost up with that agreement, correct? They got a couple more years?
For the state?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how many years it was.
In that meeting, that they had about two years left.
Okay, that could be.
So, in two years, they can raise everybody's rent.
True.
There's nothing to hold it back, because they had to maintain it for, what, ten years? To get that forgivable?
I'd have to check. I don't remember how many years it was for.
Even if it was, I hope they like tenants.
Exactly.
If you raise too much, you lose people.
I'm afraid of that, too. I'm afraid once those, once that stipulation that they have to keep that rent controlled, that they don't have to do it anymore, I'm worried that they'll raise the rents. And I'd hate to see that happen.
Anybody else? So, when? Yes, sir.
So, the uniqueness, I think, is the six million dollar increase. If we had ten of these projects, I don't think anyone would be complaining, even if we were offering these type of incentives, because the amount of money, the raw money would bring in. We don't have these giant projects every day. So, I think that's its uniqueness. And as Mr. Simon said, if we can establish a standard so that it's clear that this is the kind of, this is what you have to bring to the table in order to receive such incentives. And we need to make that official or some way or something.
Yeah, we could definitely look at updating an economic development policy plan and kind of put together a new incentive table to specifically put in some numbers in there.
Yeah, please, get us more of these, please.
Is there, Mr. Mayor, is there a timeframe if this gets approved? And what, do we know a timeframe?
I mean, I think they'd like to get going as soon as they can. It's really gonna be based on the historic review with Sheppo. And I know that they've submitted it to them, so they're just waiting on that as.
In your experience, length of that?
Sheppo. Jamie? Two to ten months?
Two to ten?
I mean, it could just be, again, how busy the Sheppo office is right now with, you know, there's some natural disasters. So, they're involved with reviewing a lot of those. So, it's just a matter of how they get through the plans.
Don't they have two years, though, on the development agreement?
To get it done, yes. Obviously, if they're having problems with Sheppo or whoever, from a standpoint, we can always look to expand that. But right now, they're comfortable with that timeline, hoping to get through the process.
Well, if they have to wait six to nine months, two years is gonna come pretty quick, considering the amount of work that has to be done there.
So, real quickly, if I can just get a couple of comments. But one, I think when you talk about uniqueness, this building is significant to downtown Waterloo. They removed the panels, and you see some of the natural building components and how it looks and how it feel. And as Noel mentioned, that was kind of like a source of contention a while. They couldn't take the paneling off. So, it is, it's going to be a phenomenal project if everything goes according to plan. Number two, it's a restoration. Right now, across the street, what do we have? A ten to thirteen million dollar restoration of the convention center. And across the street at the Best Western, we have, I don't know, eight, ten, eleven million dollar restoration. You have the bridge that's had significant investment. But once you cross that bridge and you get to the River Plaza and you get to that building, it is an incredible eyesore. You know, I don't even like walking past there. The sidewalks are cracked. You have an empty parking lot, and you have a dilapidated building right there with historical uniqueness. Our opportunity right now, and of course, you know, vet the numbers, do all of those things, but our opportunity right now is to be able to work with the developer that's willing to transform the way that this eyesore looks. In addition to that, it works with powering up downtown. In addition to that, it also, we are in a housing crisis right now. It is hard for people to be able to find housing around here, whether it's residential or whether it's multifamily. And so, this is an incredible opportunity right now to be able to bring seventy-eight units in a dilapidated property back to life. That's going to help with attractions. That's going to help businesses downtown. That's going to, if we can partner to get some affordable units within there as well. But this is an incredible opportunity at this period of history to transform this dilapidated eyesore. When we had the League of Cities here, it was tough coming out of the convention center and looking at this old building sitting right there rotting. So, I think we got an excellent opportunity. Of course, I don't vote, but I think we got an excellent opportunity to be able to transform this place for the better. But you didn't come to listen to me?
I did.
All right, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Thank you. We okay to do nine, ten, and eleven? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number nine, a resolution terminating the professional services agreement with H.R. Green, originally executed on April first, two thousand and twenty-four, for environmental consulting services to assist with the management and implementation of a CER or CLA Section one zero four K cleanup grant from the Environmental Protection Agency in conjunction with the environmental cleanup cleanup of the formal wrath located at fourteen forty-two Sycamore Street. And number ten, a resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement with Sunnyside Terrace, Inc., located at the southeast of nineteen hundred Westchester Road in conjunction with the Sunnyside Creek Drainage Improvements Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eleven, a resolution supporting an agreement to obtain funding through the Iowa Department of Transportation's Revitalize Iowa Sound Economy in parentheses R I S E program for the Dakota Drive construction project.
That motion has been made with a second. Is there anyone with questions on nine, ten, or eleven?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. My question is on number nine. I guess the first part of my question, and I'd like answers to these, did they receive money upfront? How much was the initial contract? How much do they want now? And I see that this was helped, helped funded by a cleanup grant. So, how does that affect that grant?
Mr. Anderson, upfront money, initial money, now money impacted by cleanup grant.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The why is the easiest. They had a key staff person that has taken a job elsewhere, and so, they decided to eliminate their environmental division, being a larger company. So, we decided not to continue with them just being an oversight and then subcontracted someone else. We'll just go ahead and resend the RFP out, which is a request for proposal, to get a new environmental firm to come in and do it. They are not paid upfront money. They are paid hourly as they go. The entire grant amount was six hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred. I don't have right in front of me exactly how much their contract was of that. I would imagine it was close to a hundred and fifty thousand or something like that, because the rest of it will be the actual asbestos removal. And the amount that they have been paid, obviously, they've made some progress in the work plan for the entire project. That'll be able to be picked up by the next group coming in. So, the city's not losing any money by changing. We're just getting a new environmental firm in there.
I guess I don't understand that.
They know.
The next company's gonna give us a discount because they got money upfront?
The company that they currently, we currently are working with no longer has that division.
Understand that.
So, we're going back out for RFPs to have another company come in. So, what else?
If there was twelve things that they had to do for this project, and they did three of them, the new company coming in will take over at four. The one through three will still be a benefit to us. It's information that's done, and then they'll take the rest of the project on.
Okay, and what kind of money are they gonna get?
They'd probably get the remaining portion of the percentage of what was left in the contractual portion for the environmental consultant.
We have no dollar figure on what we've already paid them?
I don't have that right in front of me.
Could you email it to me, Noel?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Forrest Dilibou, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I, too, have the same concern. When you get a new firm, when this outfit canceled their contract with us, we are now going to have to pay all the legal expenses to rebid it. And if the rate has gone up, we'll pay an increase, and we are going to pay them back for anything they did. And if that includes assessments, other companies are not gonna take their assessment evaluation. It is going to have to be done over again. And to me, it's like rewarding them for walking away and violating their contract. I know that's kind of been the city's policy to reward people who walk away. We did it at the public market. We rewarded them for not paying their bills, not doing things. We rewarded them by giving things back and forgiving things. The taxpayers are getting tired of paying for all this stuff. All of this development is in the Tiff District. It doesn't help the taxpayers. It just builds on debt. And when you have somebody come in and evaluate how much tax we get, those taxes that go in the Tiff should not count as taxable income, because we really don't get it. We give it to somebody else. You know, it never ceases. It just gets way bigger and bigger. Your development agreements, six fifty-seven A initially started out, you pay fifteen hundred dollars, period, or five thousand dollars. Today, it's we pay you five thousand, and then we pay you fifty dollars, so many dollars a door. It just grows and grows and grows. We can't buy our way out of poverty, and I think that's where we're at. You hear people talk about people can't afford to live, can't afford to buy groceries. You know, there's a, we got millions of dollars in a building down the street, and if I go in there today, it looks like they're just about ready to close. And the city has over two million dollars invested in that. We had money invested in Hy-Vee. They walked. Burger King, we had money invested in Burger King. They walked. We built a new incentivized Quick Star, and when they opened one, they closed two. We're losing ground, folks, out here. We're losing ground. You folks are gaining. Thank you.
No, just for people that are watching, is this, are we talking about, is this grant funded from a client? Where is this money coming from?
These are all federal dollars from the Environmental Protection Agency, and there'll be certain percentages of what the consultant fee can be to the grant. So, there shouldn't be any costs that the city is losing through this transition.
Creighton Smith.
Mr. Mayor, that was my comment. And also, that if we submit RFPs, they could come in a little lower. So, we could possibly save more.
Yeah, I just like saying, I'm disappointed we're losing H.R. Green, because they were a really good organization to work with. They helped us out on a lot of grants. And I attended the meetings on Wrath that they had here. And I'm just, I just wish they, that they were still doing it, because I think we benefited from our contract with them.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Kind of double down on what you said there. There is, and I know this may not be the place for it, but it is part of this conversation. So, I'm gonna throw it in here. I think the city needs to do a better job, and I know Noel does a great job when he gets up to that microphone. But there's a perception in people's minds in this city that are shared by this gentleman that I would, I would like to find a way to try to alleviate their fears, if, in a way that would be beneficial. So, I don't know how you do that. But not only do we hear it here, I hear it when I'm out on the streets. I was on Irish Fest. I hear it all the time. As a board member now, I'm hearing it. So, I would like to find ways to, if it means clarifying the Tiff Districts to people, if it means something like that, I'm new, I'm learning as I go as well. But I get the same questions constantly. So, I just want to throw that in on this, on this subject matter to piggyback on that. I think we can do maybe a better job somehow.
All right, any, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. It's sad that they lost their person. I mean, that's why they're out. They're pulling out because they lost someone. So, they went to another place, I guess it says. So, they don't have the staff to do the work anymore. So, I don't know how we could accommodate for that. So, something we couldn't control at this time.
Probably our fault.
It must be Noel's fault.
All right, anyone else, council, questions, anyone? All right, what number? Madam Deputy Clerk, nine, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Can someone take twelve through fifteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Simon.
I'd like to give it a shot.
I'd like to hear this.
I haven't read in public since high school. What'd you say, twelve through fourteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to review the following resolutions. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, number twelve, resolution approving a developer distribution agreement with Google Play in the amount of twenty-five dollars to make a recollect app available in Google Play for sanitation users ordering services. Number thirteen, a resolution approving a developer agreement with Apple in the amount of ninety-nine dollars to make recollect app available in the Apple Store for sanitation users ordering services. Number fourteen, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with McClure Engineering Company of Ankeny, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for design services in conjunction with the South Waterloo Business Park Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number fifteen, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM, ACOM Technical Services Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in conjunction with the Verdun Creek Dam and Fletcher Avenue Flood Closure Repair Analysis and Conceptual Design Report and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. And fifteen for me. Did you do fifteen?
He did.
Oh, my gosh. All right. Questions about these items?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I'm not the sharpest pencil in the drawer. So, what does recollect app mean? I mean, a collect app, I could understand, but recollect, sounds like they haven't paid their bill. I mean, a collect app, I could understand, but recollect, sounds like you're, they haven't paid their bill.
Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. It's actually recollect. And what this is, is going to be the new sanitation app that we'll be using in Public Works to get information out about yard waste recycling, refuse. You'll be able to do bulk pickup through the app. This, this is pretty much so we can actually get the app out there once we're.
So you could apply for another garbage can or whatever on this.
Yep, another garbage can or let's say you want to know how to get rid of.
Not recollect.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, yep, you got it.
That's probably my fault. I, I started that, sorry.
Yeah, you got me. I thought it was too, but. No, no, I didn't. I knew it wasn't recollect. All right, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just saying, I'm extremely excited about moving to recollect. Because we are moving toward the smart city, just continuing to move that direction. So thank you, Randy. Thank you, Mayor, for getting this implemented. And I look forward to not having to get that dang paper and losing it every freaking year. I don't put anything on my fridge. My fridge is clean and silver. Every year, no.
You gotta go look it up every time.
Nothing.
But, um.
Clean.
But, um, anyone else with questions? Madam Deputy Clerk, twelve through fifteen.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
I lost my thought. Mr. Nichols. Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And sixteen and eighteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to adopt the following resolution. The resolution approving supplemental agreement number one, the AECOM Technical Services Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars in conjunction with Fourth Street, Fifth Street, and Sixth Street street conversion, reconnected communities plot program grant application assistance and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number seventeen, resolution approving.
Number eighteen.
Sorry, oh, apologies. Resolution approving a professional services agreement with Public Consulting Group in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the project management and submission of all required data into the ground ambulance static collection system as mandated by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services and authorizing the medical supervisor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Yes, it is.
David Drier, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Uh, number sixteen, AECOM's always in our pocket. I always give her a hard time. I guess I don't understand why we need to do Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Street conversion. My understanding is that we're gonna make them both two ways or all three of them. Well, Fourth is already a two-way. Years ago, they decided to make Sixth Street downtown, Fifth Street out of town for traffic flow. What's changed? What's changed?
Ideologies, you know, from feeling that maybe the downtown businesses would better fare with having two-way traffic versus one-way going all the way through. You know, slows the traffic down a little bit and gives you options for coming back over. But yeah, like back then, it was, you know, easy flow and keep moving, like you just said. Now it is, you know, how do you enjoy the downtown? How are you more connected with those areas that you make a one-way into a two-way? So it's, it's changed over. Jamie, what's, what's the, what's the science either way? Are there studies for or against, but?
It must have been at one time to bring it down and out.
Yeah, very true, very true.
Jamie Caduasen, City Engineer. This goes way back before I even got here. But yeah, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, that was part of interstate substitution. That was the, just the city council at the time decided that they wanted those streets one-way, each direction to bring people into town and get them out. You gotta remember though, at the time that this was going on, the downtown was much different. It was more vibrant at that time, before, before it took a hit in the late eighties and early nineties. So things have changed. And it's just a, it's just a different way of looking things. Single one-way couplets are a little outdated. We've converted Sycamore and Lafayette from single, from one-ways to two-ways. So it's just a different way of looking at things. We'll also be upgrading this to complete streets to have more access for, and other accesses for pedestrians and the scooters and the e-bikes and things like that. One of the other things that we're looking at as part of this is repairing a dry run arch, which is, was built in the early nineteen hundreds from, and that's going from, from the Cedar River down to South Street. So there's some things there that we need to take a look at. So there's just a lot of benefits to doing this whole project. Part of this is, it's a, with AECOM, they are going to write the grant and do the benefit cost analysis that is part of this. Am I done? Nice, all right. But they did, they did the, they wrote a grant last year for us. And we were very close to getting to scoring and getting the grant funding for this. We had a debrief with the federal government. They told us what we needed to fix. So that's hopefully all gonna go into this new application. And it's a big chunk of money to make this conversion. And it's a complete reconstruction and it's a, it's a fundamental change for the downtown. We've had council work sessions on it previously and councils asked us to move that ahead, so.
Jamie, is this a, all the way out or is this just the downtown part of it?
No, this is, this is everything, all the way from East High all the way to Six Corners. It's the whole corridor. It's a big project. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big conversion, similar to university, similar to La Porte. This is a big change.
So there'll be parking on the west side of the street by the Legion Building, right? Free parking?
There will be parking along the streets, yes.
That will open up more parking.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Bowzen had asked and then we'll come to you, sir.
I, I have a question for A.
Sir.
I know Michelle's here.
Michelle, please report to the front of the room.
First of all, when, when AECOM presented this at a work session, I, I was not in favor. Because the traffic study did not, we didn't increase flow. We, we didn't increase time. We didn't, we didn't decrease accidents by converting from one-ways to two-ways. And I didn't see the upside of fourteen million dollars plus to start at, at MLK over by East High and take it all the way to Six Corners. What will this grant application do for us? And.
So the grant application will assist in funding of the project. And as part of this, we have to look at all safety. So it's not just vehicular. So Jamie kind of hit on the fact that it's not necessarily looking at the corridor just from the vehicular point. You're looking at the, all users. And so there is a safety component in, for the pedestrians and the bicyclists and things like that. Because we're also going to be incorporating pedestrian and ADA improvements in the downtown corridor. So there's a number of things that this is gonna improve. And it's not just, like you said, the traffic flow. It doesn't necessarily impact it to the point where it fails. So I don't want that to be anybody's opinion. It's still at a level of service, similar to what it is today. So Jamie's right. And the number of vehicles that we've had due to like the Wrath and some of those other vehicles that we had coming downtown to the industrial park in various different locations. We still have a substantial amount of traffic down here, but it's still able to handle it.
So will this grant cover the entire amount?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think we, it's a portion of it. So I think it'll be similar to like La Porte Road where we got twenty and a half million dollars for a thirty-one million dollar project, so.
Because we couldn't even agree at that work session whether we wanted the bike lanes on the inside by the curb and parking car out in the middle of the street or vice versa. I mean.
Yep.
I mean, we, there was, there was, there was a number of things that we discussed at that work session that, that were so up in the air. And it also included a giant figure, not a figure eight, but a hourglass.
Peanut.
Peanut, yep, roundabout.
Round, sort, sort of a roundabout at Six Corners. And then converting everything going into that.
Yeah.
Because when you say Fourth Street, Fourth Street comes up. And when, and then all of a sudden it merges into a one, you know, one-way into, into, so.
Randy will probably enjoy the peanut at Six Corners. Didn't they just have another signal taken out there over the weekend again? So that thing's, gets hit, I don't know how many times a year, so.
And the concept isn't final design either. So that, so part of the grant will actually help to assist in paying for the final design. So the concept is where we are today. And so as, if we get this, we'll proceed then into final design.
And before we go to Mr. Childs, is this a complete recon?
Yeah. Well, it is for.
For the downtown section.
And then from.
It's an overlay.
Washington up to Six Corners, or yeah, to Six Corners is an overlay. And then it'll be a full reconstruction at Six Corners.
I don't know, that's a pretty smooth street right now.
It's getting to the point that it needs a little TLC, yes.
Right, and not, the, the group and TLC.
Yes.
But yeah, Mr. Childs.
Thank you. Uh, so they have a really good presentation on YouTube called Strods. And what that is, is a strode of the street. Or so we have streets and we have roads. Typically, if you talk to a normal person, a road is when you get from one place to another. It's like a highway is a road. But a street is what's supposedly in-town, which allows you to participate in the businesses that are surrounding or in your town. Those two are strods. So you, they're street roads because there's businesses beside each one of them, of each one of the roads. There's several businesses, but you can't really stop and slow down and look at those businesses. So yes, it is an ideological change. But I think with trying to get these residents downtown, trying to get people downtown, we have to be a more residentially friendly downtown. So getting rid of those allows people to get out of their car and go to these businesses instead of just speeding down. And I know for a fact, people are not going thirty miles per hour on those roads. I know it, they're going forty-five. I know it. So this slows down that traffic and makes it safer for those people that are starting to live downtown.
I don't see it.
Everybody's convicted right now that's ran.
Not me. I, I do not speed in town.
Does your car drive by itself?
It does.
Um, any other questions from those that didn't speak before we come back?
Uh, yes. So there was a comment that the feds had some things that they wanted us to direct. What, what were the highlights of those things that they wanted us to come back?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask me that. I wish I'd have brought my notes from our meeting. Michelle, did you remember some of those?
Some of the things they wanted us to hit on is some of the, like the apprenticeships and some of the correlation there. Um, and then hitting on disadvantaged, the women in business, those types of things. Obviously, the community here has a lot of those policies in place, especially for disadvantaged, disadvantaged businesses and women. Um, and then apprentices with Hawkeye and various other groups. So those are some of the things that they asked us to hit on. And so we're gonna hit on those a little bit harder in the narrative and should be good, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor. Very glad to hear that because that's one of my complaints often. Will this help with the parking alongside the memorial, the Veterans Memorial Hall? Because parking is horrible over there. There's no places to park.
I don't think we're eliminating.
I don't know if it'll help directly. I mean, there's, we have talked about adding some additional parking over there along, along Corbett Court, yes. But it's, I don't know that this is gonna add any parking along Fifth Street there.
Okay, because that's a one-way. Will that stay?
Corbett Court?
No, Fifth Street.
No, it'd get converted to two-way.
That should help then, right?
I don't remember, I don't know that we've got enough detail.
Does that turn into, it's currently what, three or four depending upon how you drive?
Four there, yeah.
Four?
Three and a half.
Would it be two-way?
And that's, that's where, once we get, if we get the grant and can move into some preliminary design, we'll come back to council with a work session to discuss those things. And you'll be able to see, this area will have more parking, this area may not, that sort of thing. I think it's a little early to say whether we will or will not improve parking there.
They park on the bridges in Des Moines.
Yes, they do.
And see the rapids.
Yes, they do.
Not here, though.
Thank you.
Well, up to council.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Michelle. We got our money's worth just there.
I just had one more thing.
Yes, sir.
And it's not, not to.
No, you're fine.
Not to beat a dead horse. But if, if you're, if you're going at certain times of day and you're going down Fifth Street or you're going down Sixth Street, it's, it's all the way across in every lane and it's five or six cars deep. And when you, and when you narrow that down to one lane in each direction, you're gonna be waiting at a lot of lights. I'm just gonna go out and say that because I don't, I don't know how, how you can, how you can bring that much traffic from the northeast side or from Tyson's or from wherever, or East High or. And we're gonna bottleneck them into some, some two-lane streets. I, I don't see the advantage, but I think our one-ways work just fine. People can stop on a one-way. So you come up Fifth Street and you wanna stop at, at the brown bottle, you can pull over to the right, in the, in the left lane or the right lane and park and, and get out and walk into it. It's not like you gotta stop and look at the shop or, you know. You have the opportunity to pull over, there's plenty of parking there. But I, I don't see, I don't see the advantage of, unless, unless we get a ton of funding that's gonna pay for this whole thing to make it work. Because like I say, I think the original price tag, and I'm sure it's gone up, was like fourteen million dollars to make those conversions.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
And I would, I would also just like to add that I agree with that one-way. To get from where I live to Newell Street or the, the east side of Waterloo, MLK, that one-way street is nice, the light synchronization is nice. I think a lot of people hit that street knowing that they can get from one side of town to the other and not have to go through downtown and, and stop here and there. I mean, I know that there's two different objectives there. Sometimes the objective is to go downtown and get people to stop. But then there's a lot of people that live in town that wanna get from one side of the other, so.
Let's go to your point or somebody's point about why back then, right? I think someone, free flowing of track, uh, traffic, coming off of MLK, hitting Fifth and going back.
Have to change them all? Can we keep one, not the other? You gotta do, you gotta change them all to two-way? Can you keep one one-way?
Well, we, yeah, we wanna.
I mean, this is all preliminary, correct?
We wanna, we wanna slow them down going downtown, but they can fly out. But, um, question. There was, there was a conversation also about only downtown. Does it decrease or increase our chances of getting the grant if we only did downtown versus?
Jamie Caduasen, City Engineer. Flip a coin. I, it's hard to tell what the, what the federal government's gonna say. They have a list of things that we look at. But you're all right, Mayor. We did, there are options there that you can do, just the downtown from East High through, through South, Washington Street and then leave everything from Washington to Six Corners as one-way. That becomes a little confusing there, but. Again, it's, it's an ideological shift.
Yeah, very true, very true. Michelle, did you have something to add? We're going to get every penny right now.
The larger the project and the more connections you can make, definitely makes it stronger. So making safety improvements with adjacent to the school, also connecting the downtown areas to, and making those connections and showing the overall impact. The greater the impact is gonna make your grant stronger. Obviously, if you can show those same connections and do those with a smaller footprint and, and still have that same impact, you'd probably still score well.
So right now, when you get past downtown and you hit, hit south or west or whatever's that way, is this, would you consider that area across Washington very good, bikeable, walkable? Now, so this would potentially enhance the safety with that as well, right?
Yes.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, what about, because for example, when I go to the meeting at the Veterans Memorial Hall, somebody drives my car and they have to do a U-turn to get into a parking space. And then I get out of the car. So that's a safety issue.
Yep.
Mr. Simon.
And I don't know if this will be able to tie into, there's, obviously we have a raised highway going through town. Talking about getting from one side of town to the other. I know it's difficult to get from downtown onto the road to get out of town going, be south. And that's because of the, the elevated highway that has lights on it. Is, I, I just, I just think that there's gotta be a little more thought put in it. And I'm hoping that this will do that because you can't go from one way to the other that way very easily.
Just, just a little bit of history as far as the elevated highway. That was a conscious decision by council back at that time, back in the eighties, called interstate substitution. And they took that funding that would have raised it all the way up, all the way through town and changed Independence and New, Independence, Fifth, Sixth, Ainsborough, Kimball, Fifth, Sixth, Ainsborough, Kimball, Fletcher, MLK was built. So there was, there was a lot of things that they took, and again, the mayor and council at that time decided to do that, take that funding instead of elevating the highway to make these other improvements to all these other roads in town.
Can you time machine us all back there and redo that?
I was in high school, I'd love to. I had hair at that time, Mr. Simon, so...
I know you thought I was around during that time.
I know I was. Yeah, you time machine us back to council.
I appreciate your time. I, I won't, I won't ask any more questions.
No, you're fine, you're fine. And then, uh, you're writing the grant still, right? So you'll be actively working on it.
Yeah, AECOM will be writing the grant. They did it for us the last time, so making improvements here.
So if they don't get, we don't get it, we get our money back?
I don't know that, I don't think that was in the contract, but...
This is the second time, so...